I understand that you have done this almost entirely on your own.
Well, I don't know about that. Just help me paint and Chuck did all the building. Chuck Pryor, he did it. Wonderful job. I couldn't have done it without him. And he's still working away in there too, on the balloon, getting the balloon ready to go. So, there's someone rolling through it. It's the Munchkin, I don't think. No, no.
Okay, well, it all looks very...
It's nice, yeah?
Yes. Very nice. Thanks for all your help. And who is this?
Toto.
Toto, are you excited or nervous?
Nope.
Nah. Toto's good. And this is Beth Tissett, right? How exciting. And how's it been going?
Really stressful, but it's almost over and I'm excited.
Oh, good. You still have a smile on your face and it will all go well.
That's right.
Okay, well, good luck tonight.
Hold on, another one. One.
Oh, no, thirty-foot rule. So I'm out of all my shows, you know, thirty-foot rule.
Okay, last one. Nice show last night, by the way. Especially second act came together even better than the first night. So, way to work out the glitches and things like that, make things come together. Hopefully we'll be today without a fire alarm. Yeah, I think we did even better with it last night. You know, it was like, Doctor Scott was here, so he took off down the hall sprinting to turn it off. We went on, again, you guys went on like half an hour and it was fine. Even the little kids were still on stage and they're like...
And then it went off and they were like... They were.
LT, LTMB on my... I mean, anyone?
Lions, tigers, and bears?
Lions, tigers, bears, there we go. I know it's not lion, tin man. Oh, just that it was really big to start with. Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, my! Like, oh, let's start small and then work out lions, lions, tigers, bears. Oh, my! Lions and tigers, you know, then build. So it was just really big right away. I think it was just excitement or something. Then, I wish we had everyone here. Thanked a lot of the people the other night, you know, the first night, who were doing various jump back and... And crew and everyone. So, you know, again, thank you for all your work behind the stage and things like that. But remember also the people that maybe we don't see in here every night. Ms. Sonya, you know, seriously, blessed to have like someone who's really worked so hard with the orchestra. And remember those orchestra people because we don't see them in here. Please say thank you to them. They work really hard. It's a tough, tough score for them. It's not, you know, it's not just, you know, a rock band, which is, not to say that it's a rock band, but this is a tough book and they've worked really hard. And thank Ms. Sonya when you see her because she's worked hard as well. You know, of course, Ms. Kramer, who's done all that producing stuff that no one kind of sees. No one says, "Nice job selling tickets," you know, but, you know, that's a big thing, you know, to sell tickets and set all those things up. So make sure you thank her when you see her. Ms. Mulchay, again, working with the little ones to make, you know, I think that really makes our show special is that, you know, that little element of the little kid that goes... Stuff like that. So remember to thank her for her work if you would. Dee, of course, you know, you guys see Dee all the time, but don't forget to say thanks, you know, for her work with everyone, helping with the set thing, tech thing, working with the crew and things like that. And any of the parents that you saw around, again, like Kelsey's mom, Mrs. Rose, right? Mr. and Mrs. Ross, we're in here helping out and... Thank you, thank you. Mr. Pryor, holy cow, what a commitment there. Stepping up to every challenge that came for building a set. Like, oh, I don't know, can we do something like this? Sure. You know, I never, you know, had to beg or fight or anything like that. He was just always willing to dive in and make something happen. Well, it doesn't really have to be this way. We can do it. I'm like, all right, let's go do it. You know, so make sure you say thanks to him too. All right, I do want to say one thing about Sunday shows. Sunday shows, can that go away? No, not you, Ben.
Hello, my name is Skylar Bosted. I play the role of Hickory and the Tin Man in The Wizard of Oz.
Hi, my name is Peter Tissett and I play the role of Hunk and the Scarecrow.
Hi, my name is Abby Brown and I play Miss Gulch and the Wicked Witch of the West.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ross and I play Dorothy Gale.
My name is Annie Omakin and I play Auntie Anne and Glinda, the Good Witch of the North, in The Wizard of Oz.
Hi, my name is Andy Schmitz and I am Professor Marvel and the Wizard of Oz.
Oh, my name is Ryan Pryor. I play the Lion and Zeke, the Farmhand.
Hi, I'm David Goose. On the TV. Oh, my goodness! Ah, thank you, thank you. I love all of you. What do I say?
Who are you?
I'm Uncle Henry!
Rachel Doty is a special effects expert and she's going to show us how the witches, witch disappears.
Under the house.
Under the house.
Okay, guys, one more time, just to get it on the other way. Don't get hurt, guys. One more time in the back. It'll be easier in the back. No, Fred!
So this effect, you use two-by-fours.
So, we got the house prepped up. Am I needed anymore? Uh, not really. If you want to help.
So basically, there isn't really a real witch under there, which we won't share with the audience.
Yeah, I'm hiding underneath there. We just have a beat.
Because Angie Gazner's actually under there. It's a magic trick. And they're attached to a string, a wire?
Yep, they're attached to strings. The trunks.
That looks painful, Angie. Are you feeling okay?
I'm feeling good.
So now we got the strings, you know?
Okay, let's see the strings. The strings run underneath. Wow. Okay, well, that was clever. So then she, how does she get her shoes on in the crowd?
She's behind... Glinda's got a really big skirt, so she stands slightly behind the skirt. And then Munchkin's help her slip her shoes on and her other shoes off. He disappear and then she pops out from behind Glinda.
Thank you for coming. We hope you enjoy this afternoon's performance.
Auntie Anne! Auntie Anne! Just listen to what Miss Gulch and the Toto, she's...
Dorothy, please, try and catch.
Oh, but that cat, she hates...
Don't bother us now, honey. You see, this old incubator's gone bad. We'd like to lose a lot of our chicks.
Oh, poor little thing. But I'm not really. Miss Gulch and Toto ride around the back of the train just because she says he gets into her garden and chases her nasty old cat every day.
Seventy, Dorothy, please.
But he doesn't do it every day. Just once or twice a week. And he can't control cat anyhow.
Dorothy, we're busy.
Uncle Henry, can't you do something?
I'm doing something right now, honey. Just keep it out of our hair.
Zeke, Hickory, just listen to what Miss Gulch and the Toto...
I swear, Lenny, this new being's smaller than the other three.
She tried to kill him!
Get it on here before my arm's broke. You're out of the socket. Ain't a statue, you know? Ain't made of iron. All right, all right.
Why would anyone listen? Look to cat and to Toto.
Ow! Got my finger!
What am I going to do about Miss Gulch, huh? Just because Toto chases her old cat?
Now look at Dorothy. You ain't using your head on Miss Gulch. Ain't you got no brains?
Sure, I do have brains.
Then why don't you use them? When you come home, don't go by Miss Gulch's place. Then Toto won't keep them in her garden and you won't get no trouble, see? Quit just standing there clearing that junk out that wagon. We got parts on lumber to haul to the town before the weather turns.
Will do, Mr. Gale.
Zeke, what am I going to do?
Well, for a start, kid, don't let that old gulch ever try to buffalo you. You just gotta stand up to her, that's all. A little courage, a little grit.
I'm not afraid of her.
That's what I want to hear. Now, you gotta walk tall with your chest out. Then the next time she squawks, you just stroll right up to her and spit in her eye. That's right.
Would you really?
Sure I would. Through this life, you gotta walk tall and shoot straight. And then you got no reason to be afraid or nothing or nothin'.
Oh, Zeke, are you all right?
What are you trying to do, kill a guy?
How could you be so cruel?
Oh, just a red, Dorothy.
Can't you see how white he is? You really scare him!
Who's scared? You was scared. He was a jackrabbit. You'd be in the next county by now.
Here, here, what's all this chatter happening about when there's work to be done? I know three shits this farm has to be out of the jar before they know it.
We were just having a little fun, Miss Gale.
A farm's no place for fun. You want fun, don't join the circus.
I just do that. Be a strong man, see the world.
Don't start posing right now. Here, have some cookies. Camera kind of messed up.
Gosh, Mrs. Gale, thanks.
But be it.
Swell!
Well, you don't have to sit down to eat them. Get that wagon hitched up and, Zeke, go feed the hogs before they worry themselves and don't mean it.
Get around.
Auntie Anne, really? Miss Gulch and she's going to...
Dorothy, dear, stop imagining things. You always worry yourself and do pride for nothing. Well, you just keep us out of our hair today and go find yourself a place where you won't get any trouble.
A place where there isn't any trouble. I wonder if there is such a place, Toto. There must be. Not a place you can enter by boat or train, but it's a place far, far beyond the reins. Auntie Gale, that you stalking by the bar?
I never stalked in my life, Miss Gulch, and I ain't about to start now.
I need to speak with you and your wife right away about Dorothy.
Dorothy? Why? What has Dorothy done?
What's she done? I'm all but playing from the bite on my leg.
You mean she bit you?
No, her dog.
Oh, she bit her dog, eh?
Afternoon, Miss Gulch. Just made a fresh batch of cookies if you've been wanting some for a while.
I'm afraid I have no appetite. You know, I'm so shaken by the ferocious attack of this vicious dog, I may never eat again.
You don't leave your waste away. And I hate to see you, Glinda.
Dorothy, would you bring Toto out any minute? I'm sure if Dorothy's done anything to upset you, she'll be all in two glad to apologize, as she can.
It's gone beyond apologies, Mrs. Gale. I've laid an official complaint with the county sheriff.
Was it sober?
Dorothy, Miss Gulch is very upset.
That dog's a menace to the community. That's not true!
It's acting public service, young woman. I'm taking him to the sheriff to make sure he's destroyed.
Destroyed? Toto? Oh, you can't. Maybe you mustn't. Uncle Henry, Auntie Anne, you won't let her, will you?
Of course we won't. Will we ever?
Oh, Auntie Anne, please. Toto didn't know he was doing anything wrong. I don't want him to be punished. You can suck it a bit, but don't suck it.
You hear how sorry I'm child? Surely if she promises to give your face a wide berth...
If you don't have the dog over now, I'll bring a damage suit that'll take your whole farm. There's a law protecting folks against dogs that fight.
Well, how would it be if you kept him tied up? He's really gentle, gentle folk, that is.
Well, that's for the sheriff to decide. Here's his order allowing me to take him, unless you want to go against the law. Uncle Henry, don't!
That's more like it.
Oh, don't, don't!
Now, Marty, don't. Just because you own half the county doesn't mean you have power over the rest of us. For twenty-three years, you've had a dog to tell you what I thought of you, and now... Well, being a Christian woman, I just can't say.
Well, I can, so if you don't want to hear, you better mow your curricus off of my land.
I don't take kindly to that kind of talk, Henry Gale. Just you remember, I have friends in high places.
Then why don't you go get on your broomstick and go visit them?
Toto, darling! Oh, you gotta wait for that horrible man, you wonderful dog. We should be coming back for you any minute. We've got to get away. We've got to run away. Oh, I'll want my food for me and a goat for you. And then we're going far, far away from here. And we're never, I don't come back.
Well, 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 house guests, huh? And who might you be? No, no, don't tell me. You're, you're traveling in disguise. No, that's not it. You're, you're going on a visit. No, I'm wrong. You're, you're running away.
How did you guess?
Professor Marvel never guesses. He knows. Now, why are you running away? No, no, don't tell me. They, they don't understand you at home. They don't appreciate you. You went to see other lands, big cities, big mountains, big oceans.
Why, it's like the river was inside of me.
It's my trade, my calling. See what it says on the side of my lance? Now, um, where were we?
Professor Marvel, please. Why can't I go with you to see all the crown heads of Europe?
Do you know anything? Oh, yes, yes, you mean the thing. Well, I, I, I never knew anything without consulting my crystal first. Here, sit right down and make yourself comfortable while I conjure out a bear, out of thin air. This very same genuine magic authentic crystal used by the priests of Isis and Osiris in the days of the arrows of Egypt, in which Cleopatra first saw the approach of Julius Caesar in our country. Now, pull out your hands. Do not give into the witch. Yes, yes. Now, you better close your eyes, my child, be in better tune with the infinite. Be, be cantoon's thing without the infinite. Yes, yes, that's good. Now, you can open it and gaze into the crystal. Now, what's this I see? I see a house with a picket fence.
That's Auntie Anne!
Yes, yes, and I see a woman. And her face is caroan, and she's wearing a polka dot dress.
That's Auntie Anne!
Yes, yes, her name, her name is Emily.
That's right. Well, what's she doing?
Why, she's crying.
Oh!
Someone has hurt her. Someone has just about broken her heart.
But why would anyone want to do that?
I don't know, but it's someone she loves very much. Someone she's been very kind to. Someone she's taken care of in sickness.
Well, I had a measles once, and she stayed by my side every minute.
Uh-huh.
But that was when I was very small. She doesn't care about me anymore, and I don't care about her.
Well, that's not what the crystal says.
There was words to kill Toto, and she did nothing to stop them!
I don't see any of that, dear Crystal. All I see is a woman who loves you very much and misses you something terrible.
Well, what's she doing now?
I don't know. I can't quite see. She's putting her hand in her heart. She's dropping down on the bed.
What's wrong with her?
And I can't say what the crystal's got to do with it.
Oh, you don't suppose you could really resist, do you? Oh, I've got to get home right away.
What? I thought you were coming along with me.
Oh, no, I've got to get home to Auntie Anne. Goodbye, Professor Marvel. Thanks a lot.
Goodbye, safe journey.
Dorothy, Dorothy, I can get the horses loose. Five, Hickory. No, got it, Hickory! It's a twister. Oh, it's a twister. Dodge your luck!
Auntie Anne! Auntie Anne! Auntie Anne! Where is everybody? Oh, Toto, I have a feeling we're not in Kansas anymore. We must be over the rainbow! Oh, no, I, I know we're not in Kansas.
Are you a witch or a bad witch?
Who, me? Oh, I'm not a witch at all. I'm Auntie Gale from Kansas.
Who is that witch?
Who, Toto? Oh, Toto's my dog.
Well, I'm a little too... The Munchkins called me because a new witch has just dropped a house in the Wicked Witch of the East. And there's the house, and here you are. And those lights were all the same when the witch of the east. So, what the Munchkins wanted to know is, are you a good witch or a bad witch?
Oh, but I've already told you. I'm not a witch at all. Witches are old and ugly. What was that?
The Munchkin. They're laughing because I'm a witch. I'm Glinda, the Witch of the West.
You are? Oh, I beg your pardon. It's just, I've never heard of a beautiful witch before. Only bad witches are ugly.
The Munchkins are laughing because I'm rid of them from the Wicked Witch of the East.
But if you please, what are Munchkins? The little people who live in this land and lose their favorite color.
This is Munchkin Land, and you are their national heroine, my dear. Let the joyous news be spread, the wicked old witch at last is dead!
As Mary, the Munchkin City, in the county of the land of Oz, I welcome you most freely, Molly.
Oh, we've got to verify it's he.
Going to see.
To see.
If she.
If she.
Is Molly ethical, spiritually, physically, positively, absolutely, undeniably, and reliably dead?
As coroner, I've lost her, I firmly examined her, and she's not only barely done, she's really most sincerely done.
Right, this is thinking, this is all the munchkins are there to send it.
It's a...
Yes, let the joyous news be spread, wicked old witch at last is dead!
We represent the Lolly Cup Guild. The Lolly Cup Guild. The Lolly Cup Guild. And in the name of the Lolly Cup Guild. We would welcome you to the munchkin land.
Now our new history is, is new history. You'll hear us, you'll hear us.
I've got to send you to death! That's the wicked witch who killed you first. This is the wicked witch of the past. She's worse than the other of us.
Where's my sister?
Now does she live?
Where?
There.
All right, who's the smart aleck that turned her into a house? Was it you, Linda?
Not the house, under the house.
Under the house?
I'm sorry, it's my fault. My house dropped on her.
How could you drop this house on my sister? I can't believe anyone can be so unbelievably clumsy.
Look closer.
You recognize her, then? Of course I recognize her! Why would she wear ruby slippers with those socks?
My Auntie Yum's missing me, and she believed in me sick. But I can't live like that, where I came. How do I get back to Kansas? Now, let's try. No, you can't go there again. The only one who might know is the great and wonderful Wizard of Oz's son. Wizard of Oz? Is he good, or is he a wizard? Oh, very good, but very mysterious. He lives in the Emerald City, and that's a long journey for me. Did you bring your boots to him? No. Afraid I didn't? Well, then you'll have to walk. The munchkins, they just say they come from munchkin land. And remember, never let those ruby slippers off your feet for a moment, or you will be at the risk of the wicked witch of the West. But, but it's not for the Emerald City. It's always best.
Please, please stay in your seats, enjoy the show.
I haven't got a brain, only straw. So I haven't got the mind to make up.
Well, how can you talk if you haven't got a brain?
Oh, I don't know, but some people without brains do an awful lot of talking, don't they?
Oh, no, I just thought you might have hurt yourself.
But I didn't scare you.
No, of course not.
I didn't think so. You see, I can't even scare a crow.
How dare you?
They come from miles around just to eat in my field.
Aren't you a scarecrow?
And laugh in my face. You see? I could while away the hours, conferred with the flowers, consulted with the rain. And my head, I'd be scratching, mom, my thoughts were busy hatchet if I only had a brain. I'd unravel every riddle to any individual in trouble.
With the thoughts, you'd be thinking you could be another wicked witch.
If I only had a brain. Oh, why could tell me why? The ocean's near the shore.
You could think of things you've never thought before.
And then I'd sit and think some more. I would not be just a nothing, my head a full of stuff and my heart a full of pain. I would dance and be merry like the bee, a bee derry if I only had a brain.
I'm going all the way to see the Wizard of Oz to get him to help me.
You're going to see a wizard?
Uh-huh.
Can you think if I went with you, this wizard could get me some brains?
Well, I couldn't say. But even if he did it, you'd be no worse off than you are now.
Yes, that's true.
But, maybe you'd better not. I've got a witch that's mad at me, and you might get yourself in some trouble.
A witch? I'm not afraid of a witch. I'm not afraid of anything. Oh, except the light and match.
Oh, I don't blame you for that.
But I have placed a whole box of them for the chance to get me some brains. Look, I won't be any trouble because I don't need a thing. And I won't try to manage things because I can't think. Won't you take me with you?
Of course I will.
Hooray! I'm gonna get me a brain, let's go!
Look, scarecrow, it's a man! A man made out of tin!
What?
Oh!
Oil can. Oil can.
Did you say something?
Oil can.
He, he said oil can.
Oil can what?
Oh.
Oh, here it is. Where did I put you at first?
My mouth. My mouth.
She says mouth, no, the other side.
Yeah, man. My goodness, I can talk. Oh, my arms, please, oil my elbows. Oh. Oh. Ah!
Oh, did that hurt you?
No, it feels wonderful.
Beautiful, what an actor!
The Smith forgot to give me a heart.
No!
No heart! If I only had a heart. I'd be tender, I'd be gentle, and awful sentimental regarding love and arts. I'd be friends with the sparrows and the boy that shoots the arrows if I only had a heart. Picture me, a balcony above a voice sings low.
Wherefore I'm down, Romeo.
I hear a beat.
How sweet!
Just to register emotion, jealousy, devotion, and really feel the part. I could stay young and chipper and I'd rock it with a zipper if I only had a heart.
Then perhaps you should come and see the Wizard of Oz. We're on our way to get him a brain. I'm sure he'll give you a heart.
Well, stay away from her, scarecrow, or I'll sell the mattress with you. And you, Tin Man, I'll use you for knee highs.
I'm not scared of you.
That just proves you don't have a brain. Allow me to educate you. Here, scarecrow, wanna play ball?
You're the best friends anybody could ever ask for. But, it's funny, because I feel as if I had known you all the time. But, I couldn't have, could I?
I don't see how. You weren't riding with stuffed and sewn together, were you?
And I was standing over there, rustling for the longest time.
And wish I could think of it, but it doesn't really matter. We know each other now, don't we?
That's right, we do. To odds, to odds.
Because of the wonderful things he does.
We're off to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz.
That's awful! I don't like this forest. It is dark and creepy.
Of course, I'm not very bright, but I've been looking darker before. It's lighter.
Oh, yeah, you don't suppose we're gonna beat the wild animals, do you?
Hmm, might. Animals that, that extra, some, but mostly lions and tigers and bears.
Lions?
And, and tigers and bears.
Oh, lions and tigers and bears, oh my!
Lions and tigers and bears, oh my! Lions and tigers and bears, oh my! Lions and tigers and bears, oh my! Lions and tigers and bears, oh my! Lions and tigers and bears!
Good move, good move. Ha, put him on, put him on. I'll fight you both together if you want. Which one are you first? Which one are you first?
Leave us alone!
Oh, scared, huh? Afraid, huh? How long can this stay fresh in that camp? Give him the fucking shit, you jockyard. Put him up, he'll upside his back again.
That's getting personal, Lion. Yes, get up and teach him a lesson. Um, what's wrong with you teacher? Well, I, I heard you know him.
I'll get you anyway, Pee Wee. Why did he have to hit me like that? I didn't buy him.
No, but you were good to him! You must be ashamed of yourselves. It's better not to go and pity on a straw man when you go around picking on poor little ghosts.
He didn't have to hit me like that. Is my nose clean?
Of course not! My goodness, what a fuckin' baby! Naturally, when you go around picking on things that are weaker than you, you're... What? You're nothing but a coward!
You're right, I am a coward. I have no courage at all. I even scare myself just looking circles in my eyes. I haven't slept in weeks.
Why don't you try telling she?
It doesn't do any good. I'm afraid of her.
Don't you think the wizard would help him too?
Well, I don't see why not. Listen, we're on our way to see a wizard, to get him a heart.
And him a brain.
I'm sure he'd get you some courage.
Oh, gee, but, but wouldn't, wouldn't you feel it too great to be seen in the presence of a cowardly lion?
No, of course not!
Oh, that's awful nice of you. Oh, my life has been simply unbearable. Even my family is disowning me. Once, when I was just a little cub, my father took me to top, the highest mountain, and he waved his paws around, and he said, "Son, one day, all this will be yours." Oh, I was terrified! I'm afraid, there's no denying, I'm just a damned lion, afraid I don't deserve. But I could show my promise, be a lion, not a novice, if I only had the nerve.
Oh, you'd be in a stride, a king down to the core.
You could draw the way you never rode before.
And then I'd look, and roar some more. I would show the darkness horse, who is king around the forest, a king they'd have served. Why, with my legal visa, I could be a nurse Caesar, if I really had the nerve. I'd be brave as a boozard.
I'd be gentle as a lizard.
I'd be clever as a gizzard.
If wizard is a wizard.
Then I'm sure to get a brain, a heart.
A heart.
Then nerve.
We're off to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz. He is a visible, is a lover, is their boss. If ever a lover is their boss, the wizard of Oz is free. Because, 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 because of the wonderful things he does. We're off to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz.
It's, it's snowing!
Hmm, so lovely, huh?
Have you ever seen anywhere so beautiful?
Oh, come on, what are we waiting for?
On to us!
To us!
To us!
We're off to see the wizard.
Have you ever seen anywhere so beautiful?
Oh, so hot, I'm getting dizzy from the weather. Ring the bell, scarecrow, let them know we're here. Okay, here goes. Come in there now!
Don't do this.
Wait!
Can you read? Read what? The knoness!
What?
It's on the door, it's like it's a nose on my face, it's, it's... No, stop, just a minute!
Bell out of order, please knock.
Well, that's more like it, now. Take your business.
We're off to see the wizard.
The wizard? The wizard? Ah, but nobody can see the gray eyes. Nobody's ever seen the gray eyes. Even I have never seen them.
Well then, how do you know that there is one?
Because, 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 ah, if there wasn't a wizard, um, you... Wouldn't you be here?
Oh, please, sir, we've got to see the wizard. The good witch of the north sent us.
Then prove it! Um, she's wearing the ruby slipper she gave her. No, no, yes, well, bust my butt! Why did you say that in the first place? That's a horse of a different color.
Who's he calling a horse? Why, if he wasn't on the other side of that door?
He's coming out.
He, uh, he'd be on this side.
Welcome to Emerald City!
Thank you!
You come home?
Oh, just the longest ways.
Oh, believe me, every stomach is a birthday. Any idea just how wonderful places it is? I've been trying to imagine it, but I haven't got a brain. They said I'd fall in love with it if I had a heart.
It's one place that's trying to need any courage, because there's nothing there to scare you. Is there?
There's a garden spot I told, where it's never too hot and it's never too cold.
Where you're never too young and you're never too old and you're never too thin or tall.
And you're never, never, never too, too, too young.
It's all true. Oh, we're not too mad, we're not too sane, and we don't come here and we don't complain. All we do is just sit tight, 'cause it's all so, so, so right, right? Jump, 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 let's go! Let's ride it down! Let's hop, we're quick, we're fast, to the merry old land of Oz. We get up that well, it's where you will get lost. Take it up, we're lucky, till we're done. Till we're done! Ha, ha, oh, 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 we're gonna love to have! Let's hop, we're lucky, to the merry old land of Oz. Let's go, Oz! Let's hop, we're lucky, to the merry old land of Oz.
We're gonna stop and rest, we'll keep you clean and fair. But we're gonna have a fair, proper, grandiose race. The sound we can hear, we're in the merry old land of Oz. We're gonna play, we're gonna play, we're gonna take our best. The sound we can hear, we're in the merry old land of Oz.
Let's go, Oz! Ha, 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 oh, oh, oh! Let's hop, we're lucky, to the merry old land of Oz. Let's hop, we're lucky, to the merry old land of Oz. Ha, 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 ha! Ha, 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 ha! Ha, ha, ha! Hey, everything is alright, everything's just fine. The same problem as last, it's got all kinds of poop in hand. Oh, but so... Get out of here, go out of the town again, get out of here! Oh, shit, oh, shit, that is so bad, oh, get out of here! Did you hear me? I said go out!
That's just what I'm trying to do, sir, that's why we have to see the wizard, all four of us.
Nobody can see the Great Eyes, not nobody, not know how.
You said you'd take us to it. And I got a permit, just for the occasion.
Not nobody, not know how. It just gotta make you see Dorky. Dorky? Did you say Dorky? The witch's Dorky? In person? Well, that makes difference, I know it's what it was.
Oh, look at that, look at that! I wanna go home.
I am Oz, the great and other world. Who are you? Who are you? Who are you? Who are you?
I, if you please, I, I'm Dorky, the, the, the smart meat. We were so much different.
The Great Eyes knows my name. Step, step over.
Tin man?
Oh? You dare to come to me for a heart? You clinking, clanking, flattering reflection of collagenous joke?
Yes, sir, I mean, uh, your honor. See, a while ago, we were walking down Yol...
Whoa! And you, you scarecrow, have the impertinent task for brain. You fellow idiot, oh, by...
Our honor! Yes, your honor, I, I mean, um, you know, your excellency, oh, I mean, um, your wizardry?
Enough! And you, Lion?
Oh, uh, I, uh, I, I, um, uh... I...
Oh! You must be ashamed of yourself! Try to get it like this, what are you gonna do about it?
I am the wizard's master. The member of this infamy has a very intention, a threat to your new plans.
What, what did he say?
Are you alright?
Doesn't look tough. What did he say?
He's going to help us after all.
He is?
By his words. You must remove yourself, sir, but performing a very, very small task.
A small task? Is that all?
You name it, it's half done. Bring me the little mistakes, it's all below average, all below us.
But, but, if we do that, we'll have to kill him again!
The Great Eyes has spoken.
Now, now, now.
But, but what if he kills us first?
I am going to go!
Ready to go, Dorky?
Best foot forward. Decision, decision.
Come on, Lion! Silence! Quiet! Oh, why do you always sing that lonesome dirt?
Since you pull your foot direction, I'll still keep instead.
What does it mean, anyway?
You mean, yo-ee-yo, yo...
Yes, 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 that, do the words mean anything?
It's an old Winkie Marching song, roughly meaning...
Next time I am playing, old nation, I must remember to check out the intelligence first. Dico! Dico, where is the commander of my arrogant games? Ah, 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 ah! There you are, my simian minion, an important task for you. My enemies are about to enter the haunted forest. I need you to rouse your men and snatch the sickening little girl and your equally nauseating little dog and bring them both to me. Now go, do my bidding! Oh, here's another notice.
I hope this was a little more reassuring.
I turn back if I were you.
Okay. Oh, 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 no!
I, I believe that there's spooks around here.
That's ridiculous. Spooks, that's silly.
You don't believe in spooks?
No, I only fools believe... Ah!
Oh, take that!
Are you alright?
Spooks, I do believe in spooks, I do, I do, I do, I do believe in spooks. I do believe in spooks, I do, I do, I do, I do.
Oh, so do I!
...
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. We have about fifty times more people here than we usually have. And I really appreciate the, how that signifies the respect and the concern, the like, that people have for our new Chief of Police. I know you're here for the swearing in, we'll get right at that, so I'll call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Brethauer?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Wallack?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Thank you. So Item Three is the swearing in of new Police Chief, Brian Yule. So Brian, you'll meet me right up here. Right up here. The officer told you had to memorize this, right?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian A. Yule, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Brian A. Yule, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Rules and Regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The Rules and Regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Chief of Police of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Chief of Police of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of August 24, 2015.
I will assume my duties as of August 24, 2015.
Yeah, we're gonna take your signatures and then we'll get some pictures, so it'll be just a second here.
Everyone, this is my family, this is my wife Tammy, my son AJ, Katie, and Liz.
Don't mind me.
Thank you.
My whole family up here. Come on, Griffins. Maropps. I want all the Oregon people up here. Come on, Oregon.
Can you take a picture?
Please. Just this button right here, if it goes black on you, just hit that.
Okay.
And then your focus is in your twist. Or not focus, you zoom.
All right.
Well, maybe they'll get off.
No, they're not too close together.
You guys can tell us.
Sorry, I'm gonna dump in your lap, bud. There's the dog. I don't know. I don't know, I think it did.
Anybody else want a picture?
Charlie, Grenier, coffee.
That's official. Okay.
So we have just a little bit more police business, so I know, I'm sure quite a few of you will be leaving, although you're welcome to stay if you'd like to, but I would like you to stay since it's recognizing Chief Burke while we do that. So Item Four is recognizing and thanking Chief Dale Burke for his service to the village and the police department. Chief Burke is right here. We're in a, as I think probably all of you know, a time of some great need for some stability and experience and leadership in our police department, and Chief Burke stepped in, did a great job. But I've heard that time and again from our officers in the back, who by the way are a great crew. They've done, I've known some for a long time, some are fairly young, but I'm proud of our officers, how they've kept things together, how they've conducted themselves, and how they've rallied behind Chief Burke. So, as I thought about Chief Burke, who by the way has become a real close friend while he's here, because he's such a good person, but I started to write down what I saw as some traits of leadership, and I'm gonna just go through those, because it describes Dale, and I think it's good for the people here to hear this. I think a leader is knowledgeable, they're respectful, they're fair, they're passionate about what they do, they're positive, they're empathetic, they have a people-first way of going, they're optimistic, they're hardworking, they care about their employees and their families, they admit when they make a mistake, they handle stress well, and there's plenty of that, they have a good sense of humor, they like to have fun, they ask for input from employees, and they listen, and they have a presence, and they carry themselves with confidence. And those things are all important to the success of any institution, and Chief Burke has done that, and I think we should recognize him for that. We need a picture here, too, so it'll be just a minute. Want to keep the chamber record down?
Go ahead, Judy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, again, thank you all for being here and being a part of the police community, which is so important in all respects of community life. So we certainly welcome Brian, and we're looking forward to having him here. And as I went around, I heard lots of good things again tonight, and it wasn't all just from family, so that was good. So we have had a lot of personnel things going on this year, and Item Five is to introduce the new Director of Public Works, Jeff Rau. Jeff, you're right here, if you'd stand up, please. So welcome to Jeff. Jeff is an Oregon resident, he'll be starting August 31st, so he is right on the heels of Brian getting started. So welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you also, Jeff. And still, Item Six, a little more personnel stuff. Director of Library Susan Santner, who is right over here, has announced her retirement effective January 6, 2016. And like Dale, Susan's done a great job and has made the library a very enjoyable, fun place to be. There's a lot of use that, over there, and she really formed the employees into a cohesive unit that worked with people and enjoyed people, and can welcome people to the library, and we appreciate that very much. You'll be on, you'll be missed, there's no doubt, Susan. Thank you.
Steve, I'd like to make a comment. I'm on the library board, and I will miss Susan so much. She has been a great asset to the library. I'm really sorry to see her retire, but I know it's time for her, but I really appreciated all the work she's done.
Thanks, Sterling, appreciate that. Okay, so Item Seven is public appearances, so if there are people who would prefer not to stay, this would be a good time to go ahead and leave.
Not you, Jerry.
I heard that.
Uh-oh. I didn't think you would. I didn't think your hearing was that good.
It was at this moment. Oh, yeah.
Didn't want to hear any of that, say.
The most fun we've had for a long time.
Here it is, I have it. Okay, so we'll go on to Item Seven, public appearance. Item Eight, discuss Andy Wyland from the Oregon School District regarding, number one, permit fees for school building projects, and two, the village's share based engineering estimate of stormwater improvements. There's a note, the project will divert approximately forty percent of stormwater flow from homes on Kennedy Drive, and the village will have to borrow to pay for the stormwater improvement. So, welcome, Andy.
Thank you.
You now have an empty room.
I do. Appreciate that. So Steve, in front of you, you have the agreement that the village would sign with the school district, and we're not asking for the board to take any action on this tonight. Andy's been working on this with us, and Matt's on vacation this week, so Matt will look at it, and then we'll bring this back to the September 8th board meeting.
Okay.
And I put a copy of the minutes from the March meeting when Andy was here, and the board made a, not a, but like, you know, thumbs up that we should proceed with this. So now, so now they're going out to bid, and, you know, we're gonna do the venture with the stormwater venture.
Okay, just describe that a little bit, Andy, for people who are watching on TV.
Sure, the stormwater project basically takes water that flows currently through the west side of our parking lots, from neighborhoods to the north of the high school, and flows the water through, kind of, both the north side of the PAC, next to the Performing Arts Center, and goes underground in some pipes, and then it comes out on the other side, kind of where the bus loop is right now, and goes probably about two-thirds through the ditch that's in that area, before it then takes a turn to the west, and then goes through the Kennedy neighborhoods till it hits the concrete stormwater system, I guess, before it goes into Badfish Creek. So the plan here would be to take, basically, and create and add a two-pipe system. The two pipes are actually already there, where, by the Performing Arts Center, and basically take the water that comes from the neighborhoods to our north, put it in its own separate pipe, and then take our water, that comes from our parking lots, and it would come into a pipe, too, connect to the two pipes that are currently under the Performing Arts Center, maintain that two-pipe structure when it comes out by what's currently the bus loop, and then the pipe that the village would be purchasing through this agreement would then go through the Kennedy neighborhood. So forty percent of the water that currently goes through that system now is the school district's water, and so we would be, basically, be diverting that forty percent and taking that straight south to Badfish Creek, to a regional stormwater facility that will purchase, or will build. It is on village property, right next to Badfish Creek, and then it actually goes through the middle of JC Park East. We knew that when we built it. If you go look at it, even the grass is not really grass in the middle of the park, so that was all intended. So we're not really losing anything except a little bit of trail, which we put in, which will have to be excavated and then put back in when we do this construction. So that's basically the gist of it. Our engineer's estimate, you know, we're always hoping is a little bit on the high side, but that's just the cost for, basically, the village's pipe that would be on the, on the west side of our property.
Are there questions for Andy about this?
Does the school pay for Phase One, then?
Yes, yes. And in fact, that's kind of why we're pushing this forward a little bit right now. I'm actually, if, unless there's any strong disagreements, I know you're not gonna act on it tonight, but I'm getting ready to place the order for the concrete pipe, which takes about a month to manufacture at County Materials. We already have a price on it and everything, so I'm getting ready to get that in the process, because we'd like to get Phase One actually done yet this fall. And the reason for that is, and I kind of explained this in March, although it's changed a little bit, we'd like to get the parking lot next to the tennis courts in place yet this fall. It won't have pavement in it, but we'll, we'll get recycled asphalt, and we'll put it in there, and we'll press it. We won't use it this fall, but then, when we start construction at spring break next year, we'll have a place for eighty to ninety of our students to park, because they're gonna, basically, we're gonna, for the most part, lose the student lot. So, without that, we're gonna be sending a lot of cars in different directions, I'm afraid. We're still probably gonna send eighty to ninety park students in different directions with their cars, we'll work with the police department, and hopefully the village trying to identify those areas. We might run a shuttle from, for instance, Oak Street, if that's allowed, if we could have some kids park there. But we actually sold two different types of parking permits to our students this last two weeks. We have a thirty-dollar permit that promises them a spot until March, and then a fifty-dollar permit that promises them a spot for the rest of the year, which we targeted for our seniors. So we need to create about a hundred and fifty-eight spots for just our students, and that student lot next to the parking lot, next to the tennis courts would kind of get us there between that lot and the lot to the north.
The one thing I wanted to mention is, when Andy's mentioning about building the pond, so when, when the school district builds the pond, then they're gonna give that to the village, then we're gonna use that, that pond, we'll extend that pond when we extend North Prairie Parkway for stormwater. So some of those stormwater go into that pond, and then we'll have to build additional ponds on the, south of the Badfish Creek.
As well as if you ever updated your wastewater treatment plant, it is designed so that it could be expanded larger for that. So it really does serve as a regional stormwater facility, then?
And the village, since, I think, the 1999 flood, Mark, correct me, we've started taking ownership of the ponds, was we, we want to maintain them, because we had experience there, so we feel more comfortable maintaining our ponds.
Jerry, you had a question?
Yes, I did. I had a question for Andy, obviously. The water, I'm just trying to get clear on the flow.
Yep, yep.
The water that comes in, from the green area, from the northwest side of the school, from across, it goes under Netherwood, and it comes through this green space here, and then it's gonna flow under Prairie Parkway?
Right now, it goes into, it kind of comes around, and then it goes into the ditch, it's probably a better technical term than that, but the ditch, basically, that's in front of our north lot.
Right, right.
Yep, and it mixes in with our water, then, coming from our roofs and our parking lot, and goes through in that ditch, and then there's two pipes that are sized, I guess appropriately and everything, underneath the Performing Arts Center, or right next to the Performing Arts Center there. And then it comes out into the next ditch, which is where by our bus lot is, and then the water all currently takes a right, or goes west, and turns and goes through the Kennedy neighborhood.
Okay.
So by putting the two pipes in, the intent is to separate our water from the village's water that comes from the north side of, of School Road, I guess, and then bring that, and that would be the only water that would be going through the Kennedy neighborhood.
Okay.
Yep, and then our water, which we, I guess, estimated is about forty percent of the water that currently flows through there, would be diverted and float in a structure that we're looking to actually install this fall to the south. Now, we, we won't be diverting that water yet, but the, the structure will be there.
But again, the, the water that comes from the north part of the village that flows under Netherwood, that'll be separate from the school water?
Yep.
Okay.
By, by the pipe that we are asking you to purchase.
Right, and so the pipe that goes under North Prairie Parkway, will that be upsized, then?
My understanding is it hasn't needed to be.
Okay.
Nobody's brought that to, to my concern.
Okay. All right, you see it?
And I think we even added a pipe under there to accommodate the water flow.
All right, I'm clear, thank you.
You bet.
And Mark, you've been involved in these meetings and support this fully, right?
Yes.
As a good improvement, yeah.
I think it'll be a big improvement to that Kennedy, East Lincoln neighborhood.
Yeah, I do, too. Anything else, anything else for Andy?
Just one quick question. Do the storm pond configurations still allow people to walk their dogs in that general area?
I believe so.
Yes, it's, the pond is gonna be almost, not directly south of the ice arena, but just southeast, so the area where the dog park is, if you want to call it that, will remain there.
So again, one quick question. The water that flows through the Kennedy neighborhood now will be reduced by forty percent. Wonderful, I think they'll all be happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be very happy. From what I've heard in the past, there's a lot of water, you know.
There's some pumps running almost continuously, yeah.
Okay, good, thanks, Andy, for your leadership on that. And then, Mike, you have a comment about permit fees for school building projects?
Yeah, just, just a short comment. Actually, this didn't get referred to the finance committee for more discussion, but what happened is when the village had a quickly higher independent inspections, when Mike Kleisch resigned, we had a little, we had an oversight when Mike Kleisch resigned, we had a little, we had an oversight in the rush to do it about how to handle school district projects, buildings, as well as our projects. And so I think we've, over the last couple of weeks, we worked on an arrangement with Andy that we're gonna propose to independent and also to the finance committee. And we'll bring it back, and what's gonna end up being required is an adjustment to the annual fee schedule, which will probably, if the finance committee recommends it, that will go to the board on the twenty-first.
Okay, good. All set?
All right.
Okay, great.
I'd just like to also congratulate Dale, or to thank him, from a school district perspective, we really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, that takes us to item A, which is approval of minutes. So if someone would read item A, that will come to us as a motion, and we'll get a second.
I can do that.
Okay.
I move that the village board acknowledge that the minutes of the special joint meeting of April twenty-fifth, twenty-twelve, May twenty-first, twenty-twelve, and June thirty-third, twenty-thirteen, prepared by the village clerk's office are the official minutes of said meetings.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And item B, minutes, our special meeting from August twenty-tenth, twenty-fifteen, so we need a motion second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in an amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Jerry's not here.
See, Jerry picked an opportune time to head out the door, so. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Cool?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Thank you, that carries. Item ten is community input. It's a chance for anyone, any one of the audience to address the board, anybody would like to. Judy, come on forward, please.
Judy Knutson from the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce. We'd just like to remind everybody that our sign ordinance meeting is this Thursday at eleven-thirty at the State Bank across Plains. If you're coming, please let us know, we are buying lunch for you that day. So, please come. Mike Slavini will be there with Jackie from Vanderwald. So, please come. The other thing, I just wanted to remind everybody that the bike trail ribbon cutting is this Saturday at ten o'clock. We're gonna have fire trucks there, we're gonna have people checking helmets to make sure the helmets are, pumping up tires, if you need, if your tire is flat on your bike, bring your bikes, bring your family, and come on down. It should be a fun time, so we're looking forward to that. And the other thing is, LSM has finished with their building down on the corner of Janesville Street and Park Street, and they are having their grand opening from eleven to one. And we're having the ribbon cutting at eleven o'clock, so if any of you can make it, please come down. It should be, really, we're really looking forward to that building being used, and I guess they already have it all full with all their businesses.
And that's on Sunday, Judy, right?
Yes, Sunday, I'm sorry, yeah. So that'll be the thirtieth.
That's at eleven on Sunday?
Eleven to one, yes. So if you can make it down, they would sure appreciate it. They're pretty excited about that. On the other thing, I just wanted to mention, the chamber really wants to thank Dale for all your help and stuff like that, too, as well as Mark. I don't know what I'm gonna do without this guy. I've been, I've been really working with him, we got the graveyards done today, didn't we? So, anything I want from the historic society, or anything like that, we've been working on it. So, I still got fifty of his business cards, so. So anyway, but thank you, thank you, guys, that's really, I'm gonna miss you terribly, so. But I know there's a phone call, right? Didn't he say that today?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to eleven proclamations and announcements. Any board comments? And staff comments? Mike?
Judy, I mentioned about the bike trail ribbon cutting on Saturday at ten o'clock on Braun and Cusick Parkway, and then just a reminder of the board meetings, the September eighth and the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you, any other staff, anything right now? Seeing none, we'll go to item twelve, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion possible action regarding Grolemore Downtown project request to amend the TIF agreement for extension of time to complete construction. This possible motion would be to direct the village attorney to draft an amendment to the agreement for the September eighth board meeting. So Jeff, you wanna come forward and just explain that for us, please, and then we'll look for a motion.
Sure, I think Mark spells it all out in his letter. The agreement says that we're supposed to be done by the first. Well, we're gonna be substantially complete probably by the first, but we won't be completely done. So, the attorney thought we should amend the agreement to say that we'll be done by whenever date, so.
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth, and then, doesn't change any of the finances or anything like that. We'll still make our payments accordingly and everything, so.
Okay, good, thanks.
But.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an amendment to the agreement for the September eighth board meeting.
Wait a second, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff, or any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I can't vote.
Right, okay, so Darlene understands. Thanks, Darlene.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Item B, discussion regarding street projects, including repair on Market Street. Mark, is this you?
Ah, yes, there's actually two things I need to be brought up. One is, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the, after the construction was basically done, the street was paved, it was, we came to understand that the fire sprinkler system line did not get rehooked up to bills. They actually, the day, two days after it got done, they, the company came in to test it and found out that they didn't have any water, so we had to scramble to make that, make that new connection. So ultimately, we had to dig a hole, make the connection, and then repave the street and replace the curb and gutter. So you drive up there and you see that repair and wonder what the heck's going on, that's exactly what happened. So, it wasn't the contractor's fault, it got missed as part of the locates, so eventually it didn't get picked up on the plans that the contractor did, but we took care of that, and everything's back in order now.
Okay.
And the other one you're gonna deal with here in a minute with a change order.
Hey. And actually, Mark, I forgot to tell you, before you came down here, I got a call from MSA, the contractors asked for this to be tabled.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's tabled again.
Okay.
He wants to go back and work with the utility company, that's what, I got the message from MSA.
Okay. So item B is done, and item C is done?
Yep.
Okay. So item D is the Employee Assistance Program Second Quarter Utilization Report.
Just FYI, Steve.
So there's information there as to use by employees, and the numbers and so on. And my experience has been that's been a good program for our employees, and they were helpful at the police department also.
Yep.
Well received. Item E is the Police Chief's Report. I'll just read all these, and we can go through as you want. One is the Police Officer Recruitment and Creation Recruitment List. Two, report on compliance checks and village attorney's memorandum. Three is a Chief's Report on Summary of Investigation Activity. Item four is Lieutenant Paganco's Conference Report. And five, update regarding speed limit reduction at thirty-five miles per hour on Jefferson Street, so. Dale?
Regarding number one, we have completed, we have one current opening for a police officer position. The first step in that process has been completed. We moved five candidates forward who will be interviewed by the Police Commission tomorrow evening. Chief Yule and I will both participate in that process as well. And we hope to have at least one person identified before the end of this week that would then receive a conditional offer and continue on in the process. We're probably looking at, at the earliest, at being able to start somebody around the end of September. So we're on track in that regard. And we, and we think we have, of the five people that are gonna be interviewed, I wanna say, three of them are females, which I'm excited about, that we had, we actually had over thirty, over thirty applications, which is above average considering what I've heard from other agencies within the county. So that was a good thing overall, and we're pretty, we're pretty excited about this group of candidates, so. We're hoping, we're hoping to get a good one out of the bunch. Regarding number two, I think that information is in your packets there, if you have any questions. Mike and I and Matt have, have talked about this somewhat. I have kind of briefed Chief Yule on where we are with compliance checks, and he's very supportive of the effort up to this time, and I think his philosophy going forward will be much in sync with kind of what we've done up to this point.
I'm sorry, I, I put Matt's memo in the packet, I didn't, and, you know, we, obviously we need to talk about it at some point, but I think Matt should be here, so if it's okay with the board, I like to put it on the next, whenever Matt's here at the next meeting, have him explain it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I didn't refer it to personnel, but I thought Matt really should be here to talk about it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
It gives you, you know, you get to read it over and you get to chew on it a little bit in the meantime, so, and think about those things, about what, where, what direction you may wanna go in, you know, down the line.
It gets a little complicated, that's why Matt needs to be here, yeah.
Summary of Investigation Activity, I've given you those reports. Chief Yule has, I have shared with him your appreciation of those, that kind of information, and, and so I see no reason why that won't continue. Again, if you wanna make adjustments in the type of information that you're receiving, you can certainly share that with him, and he'd be happy to make adjustments in that for you. There's also, Lieutenant Paganco attended the Nolly National Conference here earlier in August, and she was very appreciative of the opportunity to partake of that training, and she wanted to kind of share with you what, what that, what that meant to her. So that's included in your packet. Regarding the speed limit reduction on CC, coming in and going out of town, out towards Bergamont, that will happen. The, the last communication I had with the county, which was probably around, somewhere around the first of July, everything had been approved for that to happen. But the last communication I had was that it was gonna take a couple months for it to actually occur. So, we're just kind of waiting. My guess is, one of these days, somebody'll drive out there, and there will be thirty-five mile an hour speed signs up. I'm guessing they will attach some red flags to them, you know, just to let everybody know. Once that occurs, we'll do some, some educational stuff with people. There will probably be about a two-week grace period before any citations are written or anything of that nature. I'm sure we'll, we'll give it a lot of publicity, both on the website, on our Facebook page, and in The Observer, so we'll try and get the word out as best we can in advance before any kind of enforcement begins to take place. But we're, we were really hoping that that would be in place before schools started. You know, whether that's gonna happen or not, I don't know, but it shouldn't be too much longer before that takes effect.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dale?
I'm Dale. Did we order the sign to go out there somewhere for flashing for pedestrian crossing? Or, I know you said something about it, and I know it was a county issue, and I just can't remember where that's at.
Yeah, that's probably down the road some, and that'll have to be, they're actually quite expensive. And there's a whole different process that you have to go through, which, which could take up to a year before something like that gets in. We're, we're looking to put up, you know, I think, I think we have one of those upright movable things in the middle of the crosswalk right now. You know, I'm hoping between what's there now and the lowering of the speed limit, that that will be a significant improvement. But, yeah, if we see that there's a need, you know, if the pedestrian traffic becomes such that we need to do more, then, then that's certainly something we can do. It just, it's just, it's a lot more time-consuming and expensive than I originally had hoped.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
I would like to mention, for people who are watching, Chief Burke mentioned the compliance checks. Seventeen businesses were checked, fourteen did just fine. Three businesses were cited, those were Headquarters, Stop and Go, and Legend of Bergamont. So, there were appropriate citations issued, and we'll keep going forward with that, so, thanks. Item thirteen is reported committees, there are none tonight. Item fourteen, minutes now requiring action are none, and unfinished business, none. New business, approval of pending new operator licenses, this will be at the Stop and Go. Ben Knapp and Joshua Lorette, and these are both approved by the police department. So we need a motion second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion second? Take your choice on that one. And again, approved by the police department, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen lists some future agenda items, and as Mike reminds us, to be sure we note our budget meetings. And item eighteen is a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned. Opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.